Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Hutchinson City Council meeting for Tuesday, July twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-two. We'll call the meeting to order. Approve the council agenda. Any agenda additions or corrections?
Mayor, council, how many additions or corrections for you tonight?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Motion by Mary, second by Dave to approve the agenda. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Carrie, invocation is from Hutchinson Free Church. Good evening.
Hi, my name is Mike Eastenhagen. Thanks for having me here tonight. Greetings from the Hutch ministerial and from Hutch Free. Let's pray. Lord Jesus, thank you for being here in this city. Thank you for the people who have chosen to serve this city, whether it's on council or on the city staff, our police and our fire and our medical workers, Lord. Just thank you for the protection that you've provided. We pray that you would continue to give wisdom, that you would continue to bring unity and peace to our city. And, Lord, we just pray that your presence would be here, that you would bless us with your presence and make your presence known here in your name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Thank you. Next, the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the recording of which it stands, one nation, unredacted, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and tolerance.
Recognition of gifts, donations, and community service to the city. Does anybody have anything tonight? Alrighty, we do have a resolution underneath there. We have resolution number one-five-four-seven-five. A really, resolution accepting donations from Mary Lat Sarah.
Yeah, Mayor, council, this is just, I guess, more formal acceptance of those gifts that were donated to us at the last council meeting.
Mary, you want to touch on that a little bit, what she gave us?
Well, she gave us a blanket from the earlier, like eighteen sixty, eighteen seventy, from the Harrington Merrill home. She also gave us a tea set that was brought over from another country.
The old country.
The old country. Was in the seventeen, late seventeen hundreds. So those were gifts from the family that has lived in the Harrington Merrill home. And there are many more that will come our way. You know, someday we will be able to put those into that home. So it's a lovely gift. It's a piece of our history. So with that, I will approve that resolution one-five-four-seven-five to accept the donation.
We don't have to have a vote. She approved it already.
Okay.
Which one of you guys are gonna fight over it now? Okay, Pat. A motion by Mary, second by Pat to accept the donation. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Carrie, public comment. Citizens addressing the council, please come forward and just state your name and address, and please keep it under five minutes.
Hello, everybody. I'd just love to give you a handout really quick. Is that fine?
No, thanks a lot.
That's okay. After you tell us who you are.
Yes, great. Thank you. Alright, so I'm Don Gilman. I am from Dassel, Minnesota, Minnesota. And I am the endorsed candidate for the House of Representatives seat. There's a new district, and you're in District Seventeen A, McLeod County. And just wanted to introduce myself. I know several of you on, on the council here, and our family's got big roots in the Hutchinson area. My, my family, my mom's side of the family, the Mackeys, were born and raised here. And I used to work right across the way, across the park there, over at the dental office for years. So I'm just looking to just get to know you guys and gals and let you know what I stand for. And if you're open to ever having a conversation, you know, one-on-one or whatever is the legal way to do things, or if you have things, you know, concerns that are coming up that you'd like me to be aware of, I'd love to get to know you as you represent your constituents here and just have lots of things that you have to deal with. I also served on the city council back in the early nineties in Dassel for six years. So I know what a big job it is here in all the different committees and different departments that are involved. So I just, I've listed a few things that are just my passions. I started a group two years ago, two years ago called Let Them Play Minnesota to Get Kids Back Playing Sports and doing activities because they were needing community and needing to be together and not being home on their computers. So, so that was very successful. We got twenty-six thousand people across the state of Minnesota to lock arms with a grassroots effort and nonpartisan and get things, and get things done for the kids. So I've got a big passion and for freedom, and I've got a big faith, and I've got a really great family. So I just wanted to introduce myself and then just encourage you all. I just was on a quick ride today for, it's called the Wall that Heels. It's gonna be over in Winstead at the Windstock Fairgrounds for the weekend, like starting tomorrow through the weekend. It's a replica of the Vietnam Veteran Wall, and it is unbelievable, the size of a football field. So it's scaled back like three-quarters the size of the real wall. But I got to see, you know, there's a mobile app, and I could look up my uncle, Donnie Mackey, that passed away from the war. His name's gonna be right on that wall. So it was quite a, quite a deal today. So I got to meet the mayor over in Winstead and be on the big motorcycle ride to get, you know, bring that into Winstead. So just a little FYI. It's, it's gonna be pretty cool. They stop in twenty-nine cities from coast to coast every year in Winstead. Got to, got to be blessed with it this, this weekend. So kinda neat.
Is that by the fire department at Park or?
It's, no, it's actually, if you just keep going, it, where Winstead is out by, in the field. And it's right, right across from the airport. And there's also, you know, they have like memorabilia that people have left at the wall. It's, it's really powerful. So we brought two of our kids over there, and it was really, it's just very powerful. So pretty neat. It's close by. So, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Any questions for me?
Only one.
Yes.
It says local business owner. Would you mind telling me what that is?
Yep, yep. So we own a company called, a manufacturing company called Portadoc. It's a dock and lift company.
Okay.
Yep, that my father-in-law started back in the sixties.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Alright, thanks so much.
Thank you. Next, approval of minutes. We have the council workshop of July twelfth, two thousand twenty-two, and the redwood meeting of July twelfth, two thousand twenty-two.
Motion to approve.
Second.
June by Pat, second by Dave to approve. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Carrie, next is the consent agenda. This will be done by one motion unless somebody throws something off for discussion. Approval of Riverside Church event on July twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-two in Library Square, First Avenue Southeast. Approval of reaffirmation of the Hutchinson, City of Hutchinson Data Practices Policy. Approval of improvements, project change order number two, letting number six, project number twenty-one dash oh-six, wat- water waste water skater system improvement. D is approval of the improvement project change order number four and five, letting number one, project number twenty-two dash oh-one, the twenty, two thousand twenty-two pavement management program. E is approval of resolution number one-five-four-seven-four, resolution adopting finding of facts and reason for approval of conditional use permit for the addition to a existing building in a one-C zoning district located at one-ten Fourth Avenue Northeast with favorable planning commission recommendation. And F is claims appropriation and contract payments, register A. Is there anything anybody wants pulled off? Ain't a motion to approve?
Only a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Chad, second by Mary. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Carrie, consent agenda two, claims appropriation contract, contract payments, register B. I do have a check on there for my company, so I will be abstaining.
I'll make a motion to approve that. Second.
Motion by Chad, second by Pat to approve. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Carrie, discussion, or we do not have a public hearing tonight, but communications, requests, and petitions, discussion on police facility, project funding, debt levies, and reserves. Good evening, Mayor, council members.
And this is not a budget workshop, so, just so you know, so.
So we are in the process of finalizing the debt needed to complete the police facility construction project. In doing so, there's some things we need to talk about tonight and get some input from you, some decisions, specifically on the use of increased debt as we've seen the costs at the police facility increase since December. And then, so kind of weigh whether we use increased debt or use reserves to basically fund the increased costs. And unfortunately, we do need to either decide tonight or in the, in the very near future, because this, this'll put us behind in our bonding schedule if we delay it too long. And at this point, we're on, on schedule to sell the bonds in September and receive our proceeds in October. So some considerations tonight as we go through this is to just kind of keep in mind how reserve levels, how the city's reserve levels can affect the city's bond rating and, and eventually or ultimately affect our cost to borrow that money. We're currently at a double-A minus bond rating through S and P, which is about as high as a city our size could attain. So that's very good. We, we want to keep it there. And then also, how best to fund other projects, potential projects that city council desires, whether that's the splash pad or possibly funding portions of the cost of the Franklin Street redevelopment project. And then just keep in mind as well that we do have other debt needs that may be coming down the road, specifically with our heavy equipment, as our funding source for, for equipment is insufficient at this time. So we do have a debt management plan, and that essentially provides guidance for us in the issuance of our bonds and other forms of indebtedness. We do bond annually for our roadway projects and infrastructure improvements. We have bonded for facilities and major equipment replacements in the past. In fact, we just issued some bonds last year for the police facility, so that's nothing new. But once those bonds are issued, how is the debt repaid? And that's through our debt tax levy. And that debt tax levy provides the annual revenue, which is dedicated solely to paying off the debt service on our bonds. And the city does manage that levy to provide sufficient tax revenue, and our goal is to prevent large fluctuations in that tax levy, which we saw here in the years twenty-seventeen through twenty-one, where that levy basically stayed the same. And as new roadway debt has been added in the past, old debt has come off. So as new debt is added, old debt expires, allowing our, our debt levy to remain stable. But we are gonna be seeing some, some variables here that might put some pressure on our debt tax levy with increasing costs to our roadway projects and then increasing interest rates as well. So those will be putting some upward pressure on our debt tax levy. And we did see an increase in, in the twenty-twenty-two debt levy as we issued debt last year for the police facility. And then we'll also see an increase for the twenty-twenty-three debt levy as we finalize our debt this year to finish that police project. So for twenty-twenty-two, we're looking at two components with our bond issuance. We're looking at the roadway improvements west of Linden Park, which is about two-point-one million, and then the final component to the police facility, which we had originally planned at four-point-five million, but with cost increases, that's upwards of five million at this point. So here's a look at how the police project compared to last December and to today with about a five-hundred-seventy-five-thousand-dollar increase in our project costs. And then a corresponding increase in our funding sources as well. And you can see within the funding sources, we brought our bond proceeds up about seven-hundred-and-forty-two. Our community improvement funds that we had dedicated to the project, we're able to use a little bit more than we originally planned, an increase of about two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand. And that's simply because the funds we had dedicated to the early debt retirement last year, we, we essentially didn't need as much to retire the debt. So we have more to use for the police project ultimately, which is good. And then we were able to bring down the need for other cash reserves. And then that last line item, debt issued to be repaid by the debt levy, that increased five-hundred-thousand from what we were looking at in December twenty-twenty-one. So that's all due to increased costs, and, and the bulk of that is with the soil corrections that we saw out there. So I've got a few different options for you to consider tonight, and we can definitely talk about other options as well. But these are the three I put together for funding the, the remaining component for the police facility. Option one has a component that we really haven't talked about up till now, but with the existing police facility and EOC, those will be sold after the project is complete and after we've bonded for the project. So unfortunately, those proceeds come in after the fact. So what option one assumes is that we would temporarily use cash reserves to reduce the debt required on the police facility, reduces our debt service, and ultimately keeps our debt levy at the lowest amount possible, at about a two-point-three percent increase from twenty-twenty-two, as you can see down in the bottom in the yellow there. Option number two is essentially the same, but instead of using those temporary reserves of a million dollars, we would wait until the PD, existing PD and EOC are sold, then we could bring those proceeds into the debt fund and essentially offset future tax levies related to that debt. We still would have to, our debt would still be a million dollars higher because we'd still have to fund those costs. So it's not an ideal situation, but we could still utilize those sale proceeds to offset future tax levies, not, not offset future debt. And then option three, that would be if city council wanted to use cash reserves for other projects such as the splash pad or, or other projects you, you want to pursue. We would have to issue more debt, withhold those reserves. And in this scenario, I believe it's about one-point-three million of, of reserves being withheld. But that would result in, in the highest amount of debt issued and the highest impact on our debt levy, a nine percent increase for twenty-twenty-three. So those are three options in front of you tonight, and we can certainly talk more about that after I'm done here. But we can also mix and match if you so desire. And this is similar to what we look at each budget season. We, we want to look at the impact of our tax levies for the median home value. And the three options we just looked at on the prior slide are listed on the right side of this, of this table, along with what we were expecting in December, the December seventh debt plan. So if we assume a four-percent general fund tax levy increase, and then the corresponding debt levy increase for each of the options we just looked at, so focusing on option one, we have a four-percent general fund levy increase, two percent, two-point-three percent debt levy increase. About midway down in the yellow there, you can see our overall city tax increase would be three-point-five percent over the twenty-twenty-two tax levy. And then that, down at the bottom, you can see the impact on the median home value, be about a hundred-and-one-dollar increase over the twenty-twenty-two tax amount for city taxes only. But keep in mind, a big portion of that increase is related to the valuation increases for the property, not tax increases, because you can actually see the tax rate in the middle, right below the yellow, our tax rate is actually gonna go down about four-point-five, four-point-six percent within that option one. So our tax rate is going down. The majority of that increase to the median home value taxpayer is because the values are increasing. And then option two and three, as we looked at on the prior slide, you can see option two would result in a four-percent increase overall for the city, and option three, a five-point-five percent overall tax levy increase. Any questions on that information? I know it's a lot to throw at you in one slide.
Andy, you said if we, so tapping into the reserves, that would change our bond rating? Is that a quick change, or is that something that?
It's a possibility.
It's a possibility. If they view our reserves as insufficient and, you know, they look at our reserves as, as a mechanism to tap into in case we default on our debt, which we're not gonna, because we can raise tax levies to pay our debt. But that's what they look at as the reserves, and the investors also look at that.
I think, I think the one question we can't, we can't answer is what do they feel is too much tapping into reserves? Because I think what, what we presented to you, we still have a fund balance over fifty percent, which is, which is well above our recommended policy.
They say forty percent is where they want you to be.
That's the recommended.
Kind of the number.
Yeah, it's kind of the, the number. And so it, it's really a guessing game with the bond and agencies to how do they view some of that. You really don't.
I gotta believe they wouldn't drop our bond rating over at ten percent over what they recommend if we still retain that.
The next slide shows our current reserves. Excuse me. We have our general fund balance over fifty percent. That allows for the forty percent working capital threshold that we maintain, and then an additional ten percent for any emergencies or, or tax levy stabilization. So we have about one-point-three-five million.
Andy, so right now, we're at about fifty-nine.
We're at fifty-nine-point-two or four, yeah. And then we also have undesignated reserves within our capital projects fund and community improvement fund. What I would say is the bond rating agencies looking at these reserves, they would put more focus on the general fund reserves than the other two. So if we tap into the capital projects and community improvement fund first, that would be my recommendation, and then leave the general fund balance there and tap into that as needed. But, yeah, they would be focusing more on that first line item. They definitely like to see the other two, but the general fund would probably get more attention from them. So we're looking at about four-point-nine million of available reserves, and we know under a couple of the options we just looked at, we would need some funding for the police facility, little over six-hundred-and-forty-thousand. And then we also know we need to tap into reserves to finish the civic arena roof project with, which at this point is estimated at one-point-three million. And we are seeing some cost increases on that project as well. But after those two considerations, our, our net available revenues drop to below three million. And then if we use some of those proceeds temporarily, that, that million could bring it down to, to two million. But just keep in mind, that would be a temporary use of reserves. Once we sell those facilities, our reserves would be replenished. But to fund other projects such as a splash pad or any other project estimated at one-point-five million here in my analysis, that, that would essentially eat into about half of our reserves after all these projects are complete. So for tonight, I guess we just need your thoughts on how you want us to, how you see the structure of this debt best, and, and keeping in mind our debt levy, and also keeping in mind the goal you gave staff earlier this year of keeping our overall city levy in that three to four percent range. But the big, the big item we need to discuss too is how do you want to utilize the proceeds from the sale of the police facility and the EOC? Do you want to use those proceeds to reduce our debt on the police facility? Or do you want to place those in another fund and use for other, other projects? You can certainly do either, just knowing if you, if you set those funds aside for other projects, that's gonna have the most detrimental impact on our, on our debt levy.
I think we all, we always, our thought was all along to use those proceeds to pay down the, the new police station, correct? That was my thought anyway.
On the, on the one-point-three needed for the arena, weren't we, is that over and above the ARP funds we were talking about?
Yes. Yeah, that was when we did, we had originally budgeted, I think, about one-point-five and one-point-six for that roof. And when we got the bids, they were.
A lot higher.
Two-eight. And that's when we said, yeah, we'll, we'll use basically reserves to cover those.
So that would chew up basically all the ARP if we, if we so chose.
Yeah, we're, no, we, no, we, you guys made a decision to use eight-hundred-and-seventy-five-thousand of that ARPA to pay for the HVAC unit that needs getting, that's getting upgraded in that facility.
Yeah, the slide I have up there is how the facility plan would look if we didn't fund the HVAC and the roof project with reserves or ARPA monies. We would have about a two-million-dollar shortfall in that facility plan, which would essentially translate into us not being able to do any projects for about three, four years. So the amounts I've thrown in the, the funding column, the seven-sixty-three for the ARPA, I think that was the estimate at the time. It's maybe a little larger now, Matt. And then the one-point-three million for the roof project, that gets to us just a little above a break even in our fund balance for the facility plan.
Yeah, you're correct. I think that's seven-seventy-five is, not the E, I think it's seven-seventy-five, yeah.
I like that we have the ARP money. It saddens me that it's all going to one project or most of it.
Yeah, it's about half.
It's about half.
Yeah. You know, and right now, we're, we're looking at targeting the, the rest of that ARPA funds for camera systems and then that redevelopment project. And so I think that the, you know, as Andy and I have kind of weighed over this for the last month, you know, the decision in front of the council is kind of threefold is, you have a desire to keep the, the tax levy at three to four percent, which is fine, but then we need to give or take somewhere else. You know, one of those is obviously the, the splash pad that we, we've talked about wanting to do next year. We can still do that. It's, I think we just have, we all need to have an understanding of what the splash pad, the police facility, the ICE arena, those are three very big projects that we're looking to do within a three-year time period. And so that means one of two things. You're either having to tap into reserves, which we've shown you, we have enough to do. It could have an impact on our bond rating. Or two, you're gonna have to raise the tax levy. I guess the third option is our, not do a project or two.
Is the, so the three percent, Andy, or three-point-two, whatever, then the amount that the council gave to the, to you guys, is that gonna be, is that added into that? Or are we talking like a six-point-five percent?
So if you look at that, if you look at the option up at the top versus general fund levy assumed and then our debt levy, so we're assuming that we're gonna have about a four-percent general tax levy increase. And then going into this year, I think we were originally projecting another two-point-six on top of that for our, our debt levy, which, you know, gives us that three-point-six percent. If you were to, if you were basically to raise the, the ta- option three is if you would raise the tax levy, so you're not taking out any reserves, you're now looking at about a five-and-a-half percent tax levy increase.
Okay, so I have, you've simplified this for me. So the four percent under option one of the general fund levy, would that be in addition to the three-point-five percent total tax levy?
These, these two average out to be the three-point-five. So here's our two levy amounts totaling eight-point-two million. Yeah, that averages to the three-point-five.
Yeah, our general is higher a dollar mile, so.
I could be a little slow on the update.
No, it's okay. Andy and I are geeks, so we've been looking at these numbers for at least seven and a half years for me, so.
I call it geek.
Sorry, I am in times.
I've been called worse.
Just gonna call you late for something, right?
Here you go.
The option one looks like.
So Andy, looking ahead to two thousand twenty-four, what is your best option at this point, the three point five or the five point five?
Well, you're gonna have the largest increase with the debt levy in two thousand twenty-three, because then it somewhat stabilizes. We just have minor increases. So it might only be about a one, one and a half increase on the debt fund next year. So we might be, we might be down below three very easily next year with a four percent general fund increase for two thousand twenty-four, I'm assuming. If you had a four percent general fund increase, you'd probably be coming in under three percent overall for the city levy with our, with our debt levy being quite a bit lower. Or the increase in the debt levy is a lot lower than what you're seeing here. And maybe, maybe I can show it in a different.
So really, you know, the main point of this discussion tonight is, so we have a, an understanding of what we're going for bonding. And so we're trying to, I guess, pull out of, out of the council. You know, a couple of things I'll keep in mind too. You know, we're working on finalizing our plan for the splash pad, which Lynn, we're probably looking at the end of this year to have everything done. That will give us some options to at least go after some grant money, some sponsorship money. But it's difficult for us to say what that dollar amount would be.
Does option one put the splash pad in jeopardy for happening next year?
I would say for next year, yes.
Otherwise, you're basically wiping out your reserves.
Sure.
If you still want to do that, I mean, I think that's the answer is you can do option one. If you still want to do a splash pad next year, you're looking, now if you, all right, you go back to that reserve.
Okay, these reserves.
You know, so you're looking at, right now, we're at two point nine. So you're, you, you get down to under.
You'd be at one point five.
You'd be at four hundred thousand dollars of what we would consider to re, as comfortable reserves. And that's everybody flipping a coin on what prices are gonna look like next year.
Crystal ball.
Right.
I, I don't wanna jeopardize our bond rating either.
No. And, and, and to back up, we've shown you what we believe are, is comfortable reserves for us to tap in. I mean, that's, that's fifty percent and above in our general fund. And then our capital projects fund and our community improvement fund.
Maintaining those.
To maintain at least fifty percent in your general fund. Like I said, you, you're really, you know, so you, you're really depleting your capital projects fund and your community improvement fund, which you could do that. I, I think then you're gonna have to realize you're probably spending the next several years pulling off on projects.
Right, maybe missing out on some opportunities.
I don't think we want to do that. We don't want to deplete those funds that much.
So if we, the ARPA money that's not really allocated yet, if we redirected that towards the splash pad versus the cameras and the redevelopment project, does that put the splash pad back in play, do you feel?
It puts the splash pad, I mean, it.
Potentially.
It reduces that number by about seven hundred thousand.
Yeah, except.
But now you put a development project in.
In jeopardy.
In jeopardy. Right.
Project that would add to the tax base.
No. You know, to be blunt, we can't do all that we want and have a tax levy in the three to four percent tax range.
Right.
But it's.
Our most expensive thing that we want to do is the splash pad right now.
Yeah, yeah, the other, other way to look at it too is, you know, if you fold off a year to do the splash pad in a year, how much more is it gonna cost?
Well, that's what we're doing.
I know, you know.
I mean, right now, you know, right now, from a construction standpoint, we're seeing probably record costs. Is that gonna go?
Is it gonna go higher or lower?
I mean, back when we first started planning the splash pad, we were at about one point three million.
Right.
And now I think, was our latest estimate one eight, one nine?
Based on the options that we have, they come at about two, two point one and two point two.
I mean, nothing goes down in price ever.
Well, the interest rates can affect it a ton. I mean, I think we have no crystal ball, but they're probably not at their lowest point yet. So if you put it off, what I'm getting at is, so you put it off for next year, if you're talking to one percent, maybe they do start to come back in two thousand twenty-five. I know that's put it out there a long time, but.
Right.
And I could be way wrong on that too.
Why, man, I don't agree with you.
It's gonna hurt, I mean, to do some of this stuff, you know, without a doubt, with the way costs have gone up, it's just, that's reality.
Right. And, and when we went through the last recession, the bond rating agencies, they put more emphasis on our reserves. They wanted to see a little more, you know, as we head into what most likely is a recession, they may put more emphasis on our reserves. That, I can't tell you that for sure until we go through the process, but we certainly can do whatever council wants.
So when do you, what, when does the point come where you're, you know, your interest is gonna be on bonds?
What, the day we sell the bonds?
The day you sell. So what are they selling for today?
Well, I haven't talked to Ellers recently, but the last time it looked like maybe double of what we had last year.
Which was historically, I mean.
Right. And keep in mind, we're, we're selling longer bonds with the police facility, so that interest rate's gonna be a li, little higher anyways, because instead of fifteen-year bonds on the roadways, we're doing twenty-five-year bonds on the facility. So obviously, as you get out those outer years, the twenty-five-year return is gonna demand a higher yield than a fifteen-year. See, our bonds are actually separated into a series of bonds. We have one-year bond, two-year bond, three-year bond, all the way up to fifteen years. And each of those levels have different yields on, on their bonds. So as you get into the upper years, twenty through twenty-five, they're probably gonna be seeing four percent. I, I don't have a good handle on that, but a year ago, it might only been two, two and a half percent for those same years.
The longer we pay it back, the higher it's gonna cost us.
Right, right.
I still think it's important for us to think about that bond rating. We have always had a good bond rating. I don't think we want it going the other direction.
The least effect on the bond rating is option one, right?
Correct, uh, well, least impact on the debt levy.
Okay.
Which I would assume could translate into the least impact on the bond rating, right?
Again, like you said, Matt, we don't know.
Yeah, but I think that option one, we, you wanna pull those options back up again, Andy?
So right, option, option one produces an overall city tax levy of three point five percent.
And Andy, that has us doing what with reserves and?
So the, out of that three million, you already committed out of the community improvement fund, we'd be using the balance, just a little under one point six million. Then we would need another six hundred and forty-three thousand, which I had identified on that reserves page, the six forty-three here in the middle. So that's been accounted for within that page. But it would be that extra million representing the proceeds from the sale of existing facilities that we would temporarily borrow from reserves but replenish when those are, are sold. So that could even be an opportunity when those are actually sold, seeing what our reserves look like in a year or so. And maybe, maybe we do have funds available at that time or other opportunities come up. I know we were talking with Miles today and possibly TIF bonds to help finance the project down by the river, which could translate maybe into financing a portion of the splash pad as well. So those are all options we can be looking at over the next year.
Meaning, yeah, option one, you know, has the, the least impact on the tax levy. Option three has the least impact on reserves. And then your option two is kind of that in between.
So option two, though, on redevelop, reallocating the ARPA mon, money, would put the splash pad back in play? Wouldn't it?
Well, just keep in mind, this is a temporary use of, of that million dollars.
Yeah.
So there's really no difference here, because that million is gonna come back into play in your reserves when we sell it.
Yeah.
So I would consider both option one and two very similar in that probably the splash pad is out of play, in my opinion, but it comes into play under option three.
Sure.
Me not. Yeah.
I, I mean, I'll just say it, my, my, I'm on the option one side, just speaking for myself. And I think we'll get you that thing somehow, because I am for it very much.
I don't want you to make it sound like. Well, you said, and this is really coming down to how the council wants to look at it. Hey, Chad, I guess to answer your question, the splash pad doesn't need to be out of any of this.
No, but it, not actually, but it does.
Well, and that, based off of the decision, you know, if, if your concern is the amount of reserves, then yes.
It is.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think it's all of our concerns, the amount of the reserves. I don't know if I can speak for the rest, but it is for me.
You know. No, I'm just really disappointed that, because we already, or delayed it. You're gonna get the community cranked up for an awesome amenity, and then we're gonna delay it two or three years from when we were kind of in our head when it was gonna happen.
Yeah, and I would say I think that's what the last two years, especially with project costs.
Yeah.
Have done.
Anybody that can't see how these, if they've paid attention to the city at all, they're aware of how things are going up.
No, I get that. It's just disappointing.
Yeah, yeah, I'm with you, Chad. I, I see it. That's why my thought is, one, and hopefully we, whether we sell PD and the, I forget the acronym he used for the other one. Yeah, and maybe something we can happen there. And, and I hate to see development go, and I know we're, ARP funds, we're looking at that.
And, and, and as Lynn and I have talked about too, at the end of this year, we'll have really the plan finalized for the splash pad. And that gives us opportunities to go out for other resources. I just don't want to sit here and say, in the next six months, we're gonna have this amount of money to where that puts that from third-party sources to where, yeah, we can do it next year. It's a possibility, but.
But I think, you know, you're right, Matt. I think once, once you get it all finalized, then you have something to go out and see if you can get sponsorships.
I mean, and I know that the D N R's got money out there for parking rack improvements and there's.
There's options too, once we have that plan in place, to see a phased approach to it as well. I know we talked about the overall site having a phased approach, but maybe there's a phased approach to the splash pad project as well to get pieces of it to hopefully be that big, big number at the end.
And maybe you could scale back a little to start with, and who knows? You know, I mean, I know you have a plan, but maybe we can't have quite as many things laying down in the beginning. You know, I mean, instead of having buckets and all this stuff, maybe we have just smaller to start with. And we can make it bigger, make it big enough to add more. I, you know, I know we're working on a plan, and I know it's a great plan, but if the money's not there, the money's not there.
Yeah, I mean, I will say this right now, that there's just a lot of, you know, we don't know what, what we would sell the police station for. We don't know what we'd sell the E O C. You know, we know, because trust me, I, I'm now, you know, everyone knows that we are pursuing the option of selling the event center as well. We'll do this to you, but. You know, well, maybe we can have some conversations with our legislators about some of that, you know, so. And but that's all a bunch of, what else? I mean, you could be sitting here a year from now, if you sell all three of those facilities, you might go, here's our money for the splash pad. Or you could be sitting there going, we're still.
Don't have it sold.
Yeah, we got it sold, but we're still, but not on a short return.
Well, between option one and two, I mean, option three isn't something anybody's going for. I mean, it's just timing, isn't it?
Between one and two.
Between one and two, right.
Right.
Yeah.
So then what, I mean, do you care, Andy, that does it matter between one and two? And it's.
Well, I look at it as what's the best for the citizens. They're already gonna see a large tax increase because their values are going up. If we can do a little something to help reduce the tax burden, that would be option one. Because under option two, you're still having to issue a million dollars of additional debt that you're just gonna help fund later when, when the proceeds are received. You're still gonna have the interest based expense on that million dollars of debt. So that's why that's a little less attractive than option one.
Well, I know what the citizens will be saying to us. They would, they went for option one.
No, it's not, it's not as an action. It, it will, that will be a, that really at your, at our next council committee, right?
When we, when we bring the resolution to begin the bond reprocess, that, that'll occur at that time.
So that's part of what tonight is, is for us to have an idea of what to bring to you really at the, at the next council meeting?
It might actually be first one, well, it might be the next. I have to get with Nick tomorrow for elders, and we have to walk through this. They have a lot of analysis they need to do on their side, so it might be the next one.
That gives us time. We have that.
Right, right. That will keep us on schedule to sell the bonds the first meeting in September and then receive our proceeds and lay down collateral.
So Lynn, I, maybe I missed it, or, but are, are you worried about plan for the splash pad? Or, or do you have different levels of what you're going to, you know, like phase one, phase two, phase three, or?
So they, throughout the process, there's three different approaches and designs that we can do. And that's why we went out for some community feedback to see what they liked. And then based off those three designs, they are elements that can make the price of it go up or down based on features and elements of the splash pad elements, and then also just the concrete around needed for the area. So that's why I said there's a two million, two point one and two point two.
That's what I was, was trying to say.
Yeah, so there's some different options. And then in conversations with H K G I, as I told when we were having this conversation this evening, they had spoken about, you know, looking at how we could do different phases, like, because the splash pad itself is about six hundred and seventy-five thousand. It's the other stuff, the parking lots, the shelter, those type of things that make the project upwards of two million. And because the shelter is really coming in a lot higher than even the splash pad itself. But with those facilities, you have to have restroom, restroom facilities nearby. So there's different things that you have to have to go hand in hand with the project. So there's ways to look at it with that phasing, like I spoke of.
Yeah, I was just kind of, Mary was talking about, we couldn't go through in phases.
Yeah, I mean, and that's an option as well, you know, where you could build the splash pad portion. You mean, you know, parking lots, so you have to, you know, there's plenty of street in front of that, but, you know, that makes the headaches with certain business owners and property as well. But there's, there's flexibility there too.
I mean, it's a little bit of a height, but there's a bathroom out of J C Park.
Or you look to bring it even more obvious forward to where there's a year or two.
I mean, it's not that far to walk to J C Nowhere, you know what I mean, but.
Well, it's just different, yeah, different ways to look at it, because. Well, it's just different, yeah, different ways to look at it, because right now on the design, the mechanicals are housed in the shelter, but there are options where you can take those mechanicals and house them in a separate uh, facility for the splash pad. So there's different ways to look at it.
Good, thanks. Any other questions, Randy?
Thank you.
Thanks, Andy. Thanks, Andy. Thanks, Andy. So, yeah, these aren't necessarily fun conversations, but um, I mean, they're, they're needed as, especially where, where we're at today.
Well, this goes to show that, uh, you know, everybody just thinks we flip a coin and figure out what, you know, how to spend their money, or our money, but you know, there, there is a lot of thought that goes into it, and I'm sure that uh, like Matt and Andy said, they've been, kind of going over this for a long time, so thanks to both of them. Moving on, unfinished business, ordinance number twenty two dash K three zero, ordinance amending chapter ninety four, cemetery second reading, and adoption.
You know, mayor council, um, I know John presented this at the last council meeting. You guys did, did give your blessing for the first reading. There hasn't been any changes to the ordinance from the first reading, so I will staff for, ask the council to consider a second reading and adoption of that. But obviously, John's here. If you had any additional questions that may be popped up from, from the first time we had a, a reading of that ordinance. You will make those do approve it. Sorry.
Question by Chad, second by Pat, approve the ordinance. Do you have a discussion in favor, Chad?
Aye.
I oppose. Here, we have new business governance, we have Hutchinson Liquor Store Quarterly Report for January through June of two thousand twenty two, the City of Hutchinson Financial Report, and investment reports for June of two thousand twenty two, Public Arts Commission minutes from June eighth, two thousand twenty two, Hutchinson House of Greasyville Authority Board Minutes from June twenty first, two thousand twenty two, Land Commission minutes from June twenty first, two thousand twenty two. All right, Chief Jefferson, do you have anything for us tonight?
No, I don't believe so.
Thank you. John, do you have anything?
I had a number of places in, in town where people have been using irrigation systems, and obviously irrigation systems this year have worked harder than normal. Um, and we saw it a little bit last year, the same, uh, but what happens is that if their heads are pointed to distribute water onto the street or onto the curb, um, what'll happen is the, the curb under, uh, the soils underneath the curb will get saturated. And then when the thing is off and it's so dry, um, we'll get some settlement of, at the edge of the street and underneath the curbs. So I just really encourage people that are using their irrigation systems to make sure that the, the water is staying on the lawn and not going on to any of the paved surfaces. So um, just something to keep track of and uh, check. Oftentimes, these are set to go off at times when most people aren't up observing what the system is actually doing. But if you're driving to work and you're seeing water on the road, um, it's probably worth, uh, it's probably time to check um, irrigation systems, make sure they're pointed in the right direction. So just encourage that. Um, we've had a very, very good year for street repairs and um, the condition of the roadways, um, which is very good. Uh, uh, we've had a few years in a row where it hasn't been that way, so it's nice to have a little bit of a break. So we have been doing some improvements up at the Water Street Garage Facility, um, just with staff. And I just uh, hopefully finish that up uh, this week and get um, we were siding the old salt shed, and I don't know if you have seen what that looked like before, but it looks a lot nicer with siding on it. I can tell you that. Uh, so I shout out to the crew for the hard work they've done on that. Um, appreciate their efforts, so that's, that's all I had. Thanks.
No water ban?
No, at this point, no. Um, we, we kinda keep connected with, and I check the, the drought. Um, we're, we're in an elevated um, situation here, um, but we're not into the same levels we were last year at this time, so.
I think our, we had a decent amount of moisture in the spring that has helped us.
Yes.
Well, Pat promised me rain because he said my windows were open.
Well, I hope it, I, if that's all it takes, I'll go open both mine.
Patch it or rode a scooter, because then it would have rained.
One, I think, John, the bike path on like west South Grade Road, you know, down towards Lakewood, is, there's a couple of big humps at the bottom of it. They're getting pretty bad.
Okay, yeah, we'll check.
Obviously, I think I know about that, but they're starting to get.
Okay, good to know. Thank you.
Yeah, because people get a lot of speed coming down that hill.
Sure, sure.
That's the fun part of it.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
That's why Matt stops there.
There's, there's speed bumps, Chad. Thanks for, thanks for letting me know.
Yeah, I mean, um, whatever crew you've been having doing the bike path repair really does a nice job, so I don't know if you're gonna use them again, but.
Well, I, I probably will. Um, the cost of doing repairs, as you can well imagine, was quite a bit more than it has been.
Sure.
Um, and so it, I, I walked into the first part of the year pretty slowly.
Sure.
To try to figure out exactly what we're gonna be paying. And uh, so I, you know, I do have room on the backside to.
Sure.
Um, to do some of these.
Like the job they did in front of the middle school is incredible. That was.
Yeah, yeah.
Was a disaster.
Yep, uh, the, it's a product called Gap, renewal gap. It's really built specifically for those um, wider transverse cracks. So, and it works quite well, um, pretty easy to put down.
Seems to be holding up to, you know, I mean.
Yes, it does. Yeah. You'll get some, you'll get some secondary cracking in those, but they're, they tend to stay small. Those cracks do, and last for quite a while, so.
Okay. Thanks.
Thanks, Sean. Lynn, do you have anything else?
No, I don't.
I was gonna ask you, how is the aquatic center doing? I know they've had a few free nights that sponsored by.
Yes, we had a total of six free nights for this summer, three sponsored by Hutchinson Health, and then three sponsored by Common Cup. Very heavily um, attended. Those are on Thursday nights from five to eight. Um, I think there's one more of those this summer. Um, the pool's been really busy. We've been blessed with a really hot um, couple of weeks, so it's been a very busy place to be at. Um, it's been really nice that our staffing situation looks really good um, this summer, so we've been able to accommodate and make sure we can get all the patrons into the pool as necessary. And then as of right now, um, our tentative close date would be Sunday, August twenty first, with the hopes of staying open for um, morning lap swim for that following week. Um, that, that'd be dependent on staff, but that would be the hope. That Monday through Friday, we could still have the lazy river walking and lap swim that following week. So I think the end date would then be the twenty fifth, twenty sixth, that Friday.
What time is it open?
Uh, five thirty to nine AM.
Get your suit on and go.
I'll help you. So for all the dog, dog owners out there, are you gonna have a doggy swim this year or not?
We are not planning on having one this year.
I was asked.
Yes, we've been asked lots too, but no, we, at this time, we do not have plans for that.
Okay.
And then I can just update to um, Coannis Playground or Park um, was installed with a new playground last week. Um, so Rocket Hill got a new playground, which was very nice. Um, it's up and, up and functionable. And then um, the rocket will be sand blasted and repainted, and then replaced to that park as well later this summer. So if the community is looking to check out a new playground in town, um, they can check out Coannis or Rocket Hill.
They're putting back the secondary slide off the top of it, as it was in nineteen ninety two.
You know, that would be really great, but I don't think it's up to code anymore.
That was an exciting time.
That was an exciting time. That'll slide down. That's all I have.
Thanks, Lynn.
Thank you.
Mark?
Nothing else tonight.
Thank you. Pat, let's start with you tonight.
Uh, hopefully we get some more rain and uh, enjoy summer, because it's gonna come to an end in a hurry.
Yeah.
Orange Spectacular last weekend was well attended. Um, we volunteered out there for a little bit, as did.
Well, I did a little bit more than you did. That's all right. We won't talk about that.
I don't, it was a great turnout, they always do. I mean, these people come from near and far. I don't think as many as previous year, probably.
No, I think it was.
Yeah.
Did, usually there's somebody that comes across, across the pond.
Yeah, over every year.
I don't know if they come this year or not.
Canada, that always happens.
Yeah, I think there was some, somebody that usually came from Europe, some, someplace over there.
They have in the past.
Yeah. Anything else, Pat? All right, Chad?
Um, I don't have a lot. Um, I was just wondering how people felt about having a political candidate come during our public comment. Like, we've never had it happen in the fourteen years I've been around. What's that?
There we go. Exactly. Yeah. Uh, I can say from a SaaS perspective, we get asked all the time to be placed on the agenda.
Sure.
To address the council. We said we don't do that, but you're welcomed if you wanna talk to them during the public comment.
Sure.
Um, I think if you're gonna have a public comment, you, you'd have to unfortunately really allow anybody um, to comment.
There was a guy earlier this year, Chad.
Yeah, I remember a guy here not too long ago.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
There was a good, the other guy was.
Tony Bassett, that came.
Yeah.
Tony Attorney.
Okay.
That's a little weird.
Well, if we can't do anything about it, then I guess.
Yeah, I would just, I would just caution, if you have a public comment, and that's why we've said, you know what? We're not gonna place you on the agenda, because we don't think that's appropriate, but there's a public comment that.
Yeah.
I think when you, when you allow that form, you kinda. Probably a lot you could restrict that.
So, what the good times roll? That's all I have.
Mary?
Well, I have a couple of things. First of all, I think River Song went well this year. I mean, I attended one evening, and it was a great turnout, and the music was good, the food was good, the people were friendly. So kudos to that team that worked so hard to make that happen. Um, also, if you got the Sunday paper, did you read the article, Little River, Big Problem? I mean, it's a really good article, and it's about how the Crow River flows into the Mississippi, and the Mississippi's clean, and how dirty our Crow River is, and John Paulson's got some good things in there. You know, if you haven't looked at that, you know, if you haven't looked at that paper, you should.
That's either North Fork and a, and a Middle Fork, that's.
You know, and a lot of it has to do with education of, of what you should be doing with, on that river. But a lot of it's got to do with those big tiles that run into it, and we should be having sandy bottoms instead of mud bottoms. So, and they also talked about how great our city is going to now be working, you know, with the lakes, with Campbell and with Otter, and those are all things that can improve the quality of the river. But it just doesn't start here and stop in Hutchinson. It's gotta be upstream, coming down. Soap, I'll get off my little wagon here now, so, okay?
That's called soapbox.
I know, but it's a wagon for me. That's it.
Thanks, Mary. Dave?
Well, just to expound on her, Mary's comment is, you know, the state of Minnesota is the only state in the Union that doesn't have any water running into it. Everything runs out of the state.
It's on the Newbie Day, so.
Oh, we have no feeders, except for what comes from the state of Minnesota. Just a, when she said it, it made me think of it, so. I just thought it really interesting. Maybe not. I have nothing. Thank you.
All right. Dave?
Matt? I'm just reminded of the council that our August ninth council meeting's at four o'clock due to the primary elections, so that'll be our next meeting, um, is at four o'clock.
What did you said?
And Chad and I are not here.
Nope.
No.
So the three pressures I need to.
So the other ones better show up.
I'll get sick anyway.
What is that, the eighth?
It's the ninth, August ninth.
That's it.
That's it for me.
Uh, I ran into Lester Shuff today at the post office, and he just wanted to thank everyone for the proclamation that he got for having Lester Shuff week, so he'd have passed it on. So otherwise, um, that's it. Let's go home.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Pat, second by Mary to adjourn. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye, aye.